Twenty Town Planning Commission, please come to order. Would you please stand for the pledge of the flag? And then we'll have a moment of silence for Planning Director Dale Hale. The members reflect. Let the records reflect the members that are present here this evening. Bill is. Bill. Chris is absent.
Okay.
Can Bill, hey, Bill, can you hear us, or?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Give me thumbs up if you need to, thank you.
Sorry about that, guys.
Thumbs up, gotcha. All right. Mr. Member should have received the draft minutes of March 31st, 2025. Is there any corrections or additions or anything to those minutes?
None here.
There are none, all entertaining recommendation?
I recommend that we accept the minutes from March 31st.
A second?
Second by Bill. Question? All in those favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nay. Carrie, thank you. Delegations and action items. Jim, you want to start off and introduce Andrew, which I think we all know. We can move right on with the water and sewer master plan amendment.
As you said, with us tonight is Andrew Gray from Carroll County Planning Department, and he's overseeing the spring amendment for the water and sewer master plan. We submitted an amendment for the property that's being annexed out on Harney Road, and Andrew's going to give us kind of the quick update on it.
Thank you, thank you, and thank you for having me, Planning Commission. Just to go over the layout of the staff report, since you have probably seen this last, it has changed just to be a little bit more, in my opinion, a little bit more easy to follow. So on the front page, this amendment is basically for one property to move it from long range, the sewer, the S6 sewer service area, to priority S3. On, in the beginning of February, the town got in touch with the Bureau of Comprehensive Planning for this amendment. On page two, you can see the amendment in priority. This would be the updated zoomed in part of the map. And on page three, you can see the Tony Town, which would be the draft map, the sewer map, if this amendment was approved. On page four are some of the master plan goals from the Tony Town master plan. And in from, and on the bottom of page five is information pertaining to this amendment, which is to move one single family dwelling unit from the long range sewer service area to the priority sewer service area, and with that will be 250 gallons of sewage demand per day. Gallons per day. On page six, you will see information regarding table 32. Table 32 is the demand calculations in the 2023 Carroll County Water and Sewer Master Plan. The information highlighted in yellow is what is being changed. Information changing will only be in the priority and the future service areas. And the reason for that is because they're cumulative. If you, if you go from long range, like what is happening now, future and prior, or sorry, if you're going to, when you're going to long range to priority, not only priority's going to change, but future's going to change, too. For comments, the agency comments, right now, we're waiting to hear back from preliminary agency comments. On April 17th, this draft information, along with the other three municipal amendments, were sent to the Maryland Department of the Environment, Maryland Department of Planning, Carroll County Health Department, Maryland Department of Planning, and Carroll County Bureau of Utilities for comment. So for staff recommendation, county planning staff recommends the City of Tony Town Planning and Zoning Commission certify the request to amend the priority sewer service area, which is map 27, the Tony Town sewer service area as described above. Adding 250 gallons per day to the demand calculations in table 32, as described above, is consistent with the 2010 Tony Town comprehensive plan. Mr. Chair, if you have any comments, or anybody from the Planning Commission, I will be happy to answer them. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, sir.
Yes, sir.
So it indicated that we're going to update the plan, you know, for the one resident, and then the amended will also correct a calculation error. And I was just curious what that was.
Thank you so much for bringing that up. Thank you. I wanted to mention that, so there was a calculation error when I was going through. What I did was, I went back to try to, when I first started this process, and put everything in an Excel spreadsheet. So when you change one thing, everything else changes, so you don't need to keep adding them up with a calculator. And one thing did change, and I, on page six. As you, as you can see, on table 32, what is highlighted is changed. So this .986 changed. And originally, in the Carroll County Water and Sewer Master Plan for table 32, which is on page. 153 for Tony Town. That number for total demand. Was .989 when it should be .986. So for both priority planning and future planning, in table 32, on page 153 of the 2023 Carroll County Water and Sewer Master Plan for Tony Town, total demand was both, were both .989. And now that was changed to .986.
Thank you.
And thank you.
I've got two more questions.
Yes, sir.
Um, so, so the residential population served went up by a number, three residents. Is that standard for like a house, you use three residents, or?
That is, that is another great question, because in the, in the back of the Carroll County Water and Sewer Master Plan, one page, and if anybody, if anybody at home's following along, page number 169, it has the different towns, different communities, because freedom is not a community, not a, not a town, but what, what, the numbers here for Tony Town is 2.69 persons per household. So with the addition of one household, would be 2.69 people, which rounded off, would raise it up to three.
Is that an average based on when we did that best count?
Or I do not, well, I am not 100% certain, because I did not put together the plan. It's from, it would, I am assuming, the latest and greatest information when this was put together in 2023.
Yeah, so, but it's different for each municipality?
Exactly, yep.
That's interesting.
I don't know if those are from the actual census or the American Community Survey, which would have been a little more updated when the plan was updated last.
Actually, it's, and, and real quick, just to read this bottom, sorry, I didn't mean to, didn't mean to interrupt. Says the persons per household is estimated for each community, and is based on 2020 census data. So it is 2020 census data for all of the, the different communities.
Okay, yep, I mean, the numbers seem reasonable, I just didn't know where it came from. Yeah. And my last question is, so in the recommendation, you refer to map 27, which I assume is the map on page three, but it's not noted that it's map 27, so.
Matt, the reason I have that as map 27, because in page 134 of the water and sewer master plan, under Tony Town sewage, the, where the Tony Town, Tony Town sewer service area, that map will replace map 27 on, yep, page 134. So that's why it was labeled as map 27, because that's going to go right in.
Right, but it is, in fact, the page three of our handout.
You are correct.
Okay. That's all I had, thank you.
Thank you.
Amendment, amendment is because of the property on Harney Road, right?
Yes.
So how do you compensate for the lots, the reverts lots 203, 206, when we take four lots and make them down to two, and the same way on Tony Drive, when we took one lot and made two? Where is that compensated in the use?
So we probably do need to go back and look at that, because I don't know if that was considered existing service area. I think the last time that we, the last triennial update, I believe, the GIS and the mapping was much more accurate and identified individual parcels better than the previous maps had. So we may need to do a fall amendment to bring those in, now that there's interest in developing them. So not knowing, without looking at the master plan, what category they're in, we would generally track them on our water allocation resolution that the mayor council passed every month. So we have X number of gallons available. Each month, we look at that, we look at building permits issued or applied for. We generally carry a couple infill lots for situations like this, where, you know, somebody could come in and apply for a building permit or zoning certificate at any point for an existing lot of record. So we would basically subtract those, you know, in this case, I think we are carrying two infill lots on the water resolution. So we would subtract them from the water resolution, update our consultant engineer, and we report to them periodically on our sewer capacity also. The water's done every month, and the sewer is assumed to have the same impact as the water, but we don't actually pass a resolution for it every month. But I'm glad you brought that up, because we do need to check that. Now that the, now that the water sewer master plan is as granular as it is with those being able to identify individual lots like that.
I think couple infill lots, that can be subdivided, right?
And, and lots that can be subdivided, or may not be developed to the maximum extent possible, are not necessarily counted as. Potential demand, areas for potential demand. So if you might have a house on a two acre parcel, which is unusual in the city, you know, that parcel could be subdivided, or you might be able to put another house on it and meet the interior distance requirements, and, you know, and build a second house at the far corner of the lot. And that, we would. Honestly, I'm not sure how that would be reflected in the water and sewer master plan, because if it had an existing house on the property, it would already be in the existing service area. So it's already served, but we would have to still keep track of it for our.
The 250 gallons, right.
Right.
If I may?
Yes.
If I'm understanding this correctly, sorry, I don't want to get too far from the microphone. If you had, let's say, a house that's, or a property that's as big as this paper, and there's one house on it, and you're mentioning about what would allocations be if somehow that was subdivided, and you have two houses on it, right? So you were going from 250 to, to 500. Is that the, the question, just to?
Yes, basically, yes.
So from what I understand, there is what's called the buildable land inventory that the county takes care of in GIS, they, they keep track of. So for instance, every year when Tiffany comes around and does the annual report, the, the planning annual report to send down to Maryland Department of Planning, in there, there's different, there's, there's the amount of buildable land that can still be built on. So let's say if you had that property that's as big as a piece of paper, and you wanted to subdivide it, well, there's a chance, and I don't know for each particular situation, but that property could have one more buildable land. I guess I want to say allocation, but one more.
Opportunity.
Opportunity, right, right, perfect, an opportunity. So that would be taken into account. So when we go back and do this entire, the triennial update, what you do, what, what happens is, usually, you take the existing flows, so whatever at the plant, and then you, from the existing flows, you factor in the buildable land inventory, the BLI, into those existing flows. So what's the BLI in priority and future? That is taken into account when you look at those later years. And it gets a little bit more complicated, because BLI that's in existing isn't reflected in existing, and I know I'm going probably too far here, but just for the, for the record, the BLI for existing's not in existing, because it's not connected. Existing is just what is hooked up to the system. So if you have a house that's in the existing water and sewer service area that's not hooked up, it would be shown in priority. And buildable land in priority would also be in priority, and buildable land in future would just be in future. Sorry, I, I didn't mean to, I don't want to, don't want to throw too much out there, but that's how, from what, the question you were asking, there's that buildable land inventory that the county keeps track of, that goes and factors into the numbers that are in the, in the, in the master plan.
So if we had a two acre lot that happened to be in town property, depending on what it's zoned, that's what you would use for the buildable?
From what I understand, the county GIS looks at what the zoning is and the yield of the property. Now, with different zoning, it, you go from, you know, from, from residential to in the plan other for commercial industrial, and that would be based off of acreage, buildable acreage. Residential's just buildable dwelling units at 235, 250, sorry, 250. That's how.
That's, that's interesting. That's, it seems like a lot of work for a what-if analysis.
And that's why I love the power of Excel.
Yes, for a number, you can get anything you, right. So then how do we account for Allen Dell Lane when we lost those four houses, or three? How many was there?
Four.
Four.
Oh, was it four? Maybe it was three. I can't.
How did that get accounted for?
Out of sight, out of mind.
So what we've done typically.
Am I asking the wrong question at the wrong time?
So it's, yeah. I don't recall that we did anything on the water allocation resolution, because. Trying to think of scenarios where we had this. Typically, the EDU has stayed with the property. With this property being converted from dwellings to a parking lot, the thought may have been that those EDUs would be credited to EVAPCO, the property owner. But I don't think we actually followed through with any, any credit back to the water system, you know, to offset the demolition of those four houses.
Us. But that would.
We have, when, when things were incredibly tight, we, we really did scrutinize things like that. If a house was demolished, we went to the health department, and we said, hey, there's not an EDU being used here, can we get one back? Because we were that desperate for water capacity.
Thousand gallons per day.
But that would get, that gets cleaned up the next update, whatever it is, five years, I mean.
It could be, and, you know, I, I don't think that we've had conversations with EVAPCO about it. I, I don't remember making any adjustments on the water allocation resolution, but I haven't been as closely involved with planning and zoning stuff as I used to be, so that's, that's a good question, though. But normally, the EDU stays with the property more often than not.
Questions? Bill, any questions? Any questions from the floor?
That was your chance, Tiffany.
So I guess we're looking for, a motion for me to have authority to sign this.
Sure.
If I'd like to make out a motion that I, that I sign the Carroll County Water and Sewer Master Plan 2025 Spring Amendment.
I'll make the motion.
You made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Comments? So all those in favor of the motion of approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carrie, sign dated. Dated.
Thank you, Planning Commission.
Around for a second, you can probably just grab.
Okay. Who want copies of that before, yes? What we need copies of before you take it? Comment or any question for us? Do you have anything else for us?
No, sir.
I'll extend the welcome for you to stay, too, or you're on your way. I'm, I'm sorry, we don't have refreshments like you had for us, but we do have order.
No, no worries, no worries.
All right. Ordinants in agreement for review, evidently there isn't any. Jim, you have a report that you want to give on?
I can just run through, I didn't do a written report. Hopefully, I will get a chance to do that next month. But, yeah, if you'd like, I can kind of run through what updates we do have on the active plans, things that are in the pipeline. And I apologize, I did not take Maryland Compassionate Care and Wellness off the agenda. It is already off the May agenda, but they did retract that, that site plan for the outdoor grow, so we're going to strike that one going forward.
Maryland taxes. Maryland taxes again.
Memorial Park expansion project, we continue to work with the State Highway Administration on the runoff for the sidewalk that's proposed. I really don't want to come before you guys and say that we're taking the sidewalk off of our own project after the last month or two's comments, but the engineer is really having challenges meeting the State Highway Administration's stormwater requirements for that. And the issue is, there is a, an undefined downstream analysis that needs to be done in order for State Highway to decide if it's an acceptable amount increase in the runoff into the State Highway right of way. So our engineer doesn't know what's expected of them, and so we're hesitant to get into this undefined analysis, because it might take months and months. Meanwhile, we have a grant for the park, and we need to start building so that we can build and be done by the time the grant funds need to be expended. So we continue on with that. I spoke with the engineer today, they're still looking at, at potential options for, to treat the stormwater that the sidewalk would, would trigger the additional stormwater.
That, all the sidewalks that were in the plan?
No, no, it's just the sidewalk between the, where the existing sidewalk on Frederick Street ends by the Catholic Church, and it would continue down to the entrance to, the new entrance to the park. The idea of putting that sidewalk into the existing impervious to reduce the new amount of impervious that we would create is frowned upon, well, actually, State Highway didn't tell us we could do that. I brought it up on our last conference call, and there, it was not positively received by State Highway. So, and it's, it's this minuscule factor that we're trying to meet.
That's too bad, it's, I mean, it's, so people walk into the park, that's the sidewalk they would be using.
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly right. And so that, the jury is still out on that one, but, you know, if it, if it comes down to risking the grant money for the project, or taking the sidewalk off, the sidewalk is going to lose. So it's, it's a very unfortunate scenario, but we're not finding State Highway to be particularly flexible in, you know, what they will accept.
That's going to kind of put us under predicament for final approval.
Now you get involved in ADA rules and stuff, don't you?
So State Highway has said, you know, if the city wants to take the side, the sidewalk off the project, their comments go away. But of course, we don't really want to take the sidewalk off, we want State Highway to compromise a little bit. So, so that drags on. Storage today, I know last month, they were on the agenda for preliminary plan approval, and turns out there was some confusion on some of the approval letters, and there was one that had concept, our engineer had provided concept plan approval. Planning Director Hale mistook that for preliminary plan approval recommendation. So they actually, our engineer actually did have some additional comments that were yet to be addressed. So turns out to be a positive that it wasn't approved for preliminary plan, because there are still some outstanding comments.
I thought that would come back for tonight's meeting, though.
Some additional, I don't think that any. Yeah, we did get one additional comment letter, I think, on that one. Yeah, but that's, that's all we've, we've heard on it, so we haven't gotten any revised plans yet that, that have that struck-through text deleted. I have not heard from, from their engineer.
What we heard from, back from the county was the ADA.
Forest conservation.
Mountain Brook, we're still having some conversations with Flowserve about the road easement across the property. Flowserve has agreed to set up a, a time to meet with their leadership team, who is the group that declined to approve the easement request. So we may be talking about possible compensation for Flowserve, or some other benefit that we can try to determine or define for them. So the door's not completely closed on that one, so that obviously will impact the design for Mountain Brook Farm.
While you're on Mountain Brook, I think last month and probably the month before, Barry brought up a good issue about easements. With two different. Thinking about that, and it's kind of hard to put something in writing about a distance from one entrance to another, based on the element or project. The other site. Certain distance from each entrance.
So that, that is going to be, we can consider some minimum distance, but sightlines and, and slope and things of that nature are, of course, all going to be very site-specific to any project. I, I do know from just. I, I do know from just a, you know, brief exchange with Fire Protection Services at the county that, that there are some, they've seen some instances where developers have tried to put the second entrance very close to the existing entrance, perhaps because that's where they could achieve sightline, you know, distances and such. That, you know, that's something that we need to be mindful of also, that, you know, does it really meet the need or fulfill the purpose of that secondary entrance? So Mountain Brook did talk a bit about an emergency-only access point, and I did not think that was really the commission's desire, that I think we were looking for a public, a second public access point, not a gated-off, emergency-only. So having confirmed that, I can certainly make sure that, that Mountain Brook is aware that that's the commission's intent. But drafting of any code revisions has kind of stalled on that. The specification manual is still being updated with regard to some of the street requirements and the paving sections and things like that related to the future bypass, segments of road that will function as the future bypass. So that, that is going, ongoing with our engineer. But as far as the subdivision chapter, we've kind of stalled on that right now.
I know we, we kind of said in the past, a rule of thumb of 50 homes requirement, but I think somewhere that should be in a standard, just a rule of thumb by the commission here.
Right, and that's, that's what we want to address in the, most likely in the subdivision chapter, that's where it's going to apply, you know. I suppose you can, we could have a residential subdivision or site plan also, like Carroll Vista, so we probably won't need to touch both of those chapters.
I think the county has less than that, don't they have around 20 or something?
I think they like to see 25, at 25, they like to see, at least Fire Protection likes to see multiple points of ingress egress.
They could have a rule of thumb, you follow them.
Right, right, but, but that's just a rule of thumb, it's not a code requirement, to my understanding. I don't have anything new on Garnet Ridge for you.
Paper on them, didn't you?
One, one comment letter, I think, on that.
I don't think it was two. Sheet, I thought, I thought we were getting pretty close with Sheets a couple of months ago.
We are, I actually just reviewed the city attorney's latest invoice, there was nothing on there for Sheets, so we can close out their, their escrow account. We just wanted to make sure that there weren't any billable hours for either our engineer or the city attorney before we return the balance of the escrow to them, so just reviewed that, that invoice today, the treasurer sent it to me.
I was going to hold off until we ask for legal opinion on this thing. Jay, you, you on?
I am, Mr. Chairman.
So where do we stand with all these projects that Jay's involved with? I understand he's getting close to his end of service here with us, so what happens next month and preceding months with these projects?
Well, I think the plan at this point in time, there is no plan.
That's true, Jim.
So what I had sent with, to you all and the council last month, wasn't a surprise because we kind of had announced this about 18 months ago. And so I had told the city manager that if we want to do something in the transition, that he and the mayor can talk about what that would look like and how that would help and what they need me to do. And so we haven't had that conversation yet, but at least that's my thought, is I don't want to leave the city high and dry and just walk out. So you know, there are different options, but I feel that the mayor and the manager need to kind of come up with what they see their need is at this point.
Not kind of what I wanted to hear, but that's fine.
Jay, and I need to get our, get our schedules out and, and set up a little time to hash through that, so.
With the rest of the projects?
Let's see, the red line changes for EVAPCO, building permits have been approved, nothing new on George's.
What's going on?
Go ahead. Is there any progress being made?
Behind the scenes, there is activity.
Okay.
But nothing public at this point.
That should be something small enough that we can go ahead and, and resolve, or the city council should go ahead and resolve. I mean, it's been what, four years, five years, whatever?
Does he pay any water at all, or are we waiting to see what the end of the period is?
They, they get the normal quarterly bill.
Okay.
This is, this is all about the benefit assessment fee from when, when the bed and breakfast use was initially established.
I just think it's odd, the number of people we shut off every month for not paying the water bill, and here you have a gentleman on the council with a water bill issue, so putting it out there.
Meats Crossing, they've, Public Works has been back out to re-inspect, the developer thought they had finished all of the punch list items, but there are still a handful of things that need to be corrected before the city accepts ownership of the infrastructure. So we are expecting that to happen within the next month or so. I mean, it's, you know, warm weather now, we don't need to wait for paving or anything like that. I'm not sure what the, I know they had some issues where, where water valves in the streets weren't, weren't set properly and, and some minor things like that, so.
Did we figure out what the, the extra water was coming from?
They've gotten that largely under control, there is still some increase after rain events, and you know, we realize that we're never going to have a completely tight system, but the, the inflow has gotten down to a reasonable level that Public Works says they're willing to accept. It's still higher than I think we would like, considering that the infrastructure's only a couple of years old.
Right.
But we're, we're willing to accept it with the things that the developer put in place.
It's the new structure basically leaking from the outside in, right?
There are some suspected other factors that we really can't prove.
Understand.
Like some pumps, maybe?
That is something that we, we suspect may be a factor with some lots out there.
Yeah.
All right.
So at any rate, yeah, hopefully that will be, hopefully for them, the city will take that over in the next month or two. EVAPCO just mentioned that earlier, that the feature wall permits were approved, otherwise construction continues. Construction activity has begun at Recovery 180, I don't know if anybody's been down there along Harney Road to see the salt fences up and some activity has started. Nothing new on the EVAPCO parking lot.
Back to, back to Recovery 180. What was it, a year ago, we gave a final approval with contingency on completion of, how long does that stand as, as a final?
So they've gotten their grading permit approved, so that's basically saying construction has started, that's usually our, our benchmark.
Benchmark, okay.
That construction started, is when we signed the, the grading permit, and that's been done. And that was just this month. Nothing new on the EVAPCO parking lot or the elementary school, so.
Yeah.
That's all I got.
Comment on any of those?
Oh, thanks.
All right, now we'll jump back into Jay.
Well, good evening, we've kind of touched on the transition that we need to come up with, and you know, to that end, I've been working behind the scenes to make sure all of the land issues are at least dealt with, or on that right track to being dealt with, the easements and the evaluation that the city manager talked about and those types of things. And other than that, the past month, the biggest issue has been trying to create a list of the things that are outstanding or need to be dealt with, and the list keeps growing and growing, but I guess that's the way it is in city office, so maybe I'll see you at a future meeting, maybe I won't, but if not, it's been wonderful to work with you. I think Chairman Parker, I was trying to remember, you were here before I got here. I mean, how many years ago was that?
I got less hair than you too.
Yeah, I know, not so much. So anyway, it may not be the end, but I just wanted to make sure I came tonight to answer any questions you may have. Things really have, since our last couple meetings where we talked about Mountain Brook and the DARA and things like that, they've kind of come to a standstill because the developers realize until we get our act together about the two entrances and the right-of-way, we're not going to agree to anything, and so they, they are, they realize that at least. So that's kind of where we've left that, but they want to move ahead as well, so there's always room for negotiation, I guess.
Jay, always remember that you're welcome, and you're going to be really missed by, at least this commission anyway.
I missed, I really like working with you guys, it's always a, a pleasure to see things get done in a business-like setting, and you guys take care of that, and you have for, I've been there for 24 years, and it's been under your leadership, Mr. Chairman, so thank you very much. If you need anything, you let me know.
All right, thanks Jay, anybody have any comments for Jay? All right, thank you Jay. Okay, county update. Tiffany, now's the time to impress.
Well, on, on, on another note though, I do want to express on behalf of the Bureau of Comprehensive Planning, as well as me personally, my condolences for the loss of Darrell Hill. He has been a wonderful colleague, as you know, and he will be greatly missed. And then to move on. As Andrew has already pointed out, the text amendments for the, I'm sorry, not the text amendments, the water sewer master plan amendments are moving forward with the spring 2025 amendments. For text amendments, there is no text amendments being processed by the Bureau of Comprehensive Planning right now, however, the county commissioners have requested that the Planning Commission, County Planning Commission, review our adequate public facilities ordinances, so they'll be, that'll be coming up in future meetings, and I'll keep you posted on that. For the master plan update, we are starting the three work groups soon, actually, next week, we'll have the housing work group, agriculture work group, and the economic development work group that will be starting. They'll run through August to make recommendations to the Planning Commission for the comprehensive plan update. And we also started, we've started youth engagement, so we're, we met with one youth group from the Boys and Girls Club, got lots of input because this is, the county's their future, hopefully, and so we're trying to get a good, a good handle on what they want to see in their future. And then for the, for the annual report, did move that back, I'll have the draft to you in a few weeks, but not by next week. So just wondering, questions or comments?
Bill, you good? Thank you, thank you. Old business, uh, community comprehensive master plan update, our meetings that we're having the week before this regular meeting, it seems to be moving on pretty good. I don't know if we had any objection on how we should be at any given point. I think we expressed ourselves last week that we definitely want to hear something about our key personnel, and hope they're moving forward before next month's meeting with it.
I will, I will give them a friendly reminder.
Yeah.
Looking for some updates on that.
Nope.
New business, I have new business is, Memorial Day is next month, so if we move it ahead a month, that's only gives us a couple of weeks before our next meeting. May, what, May has five, five Mondays? Five Mondays, right? First of June, or if there isn't anything pushing on the agenda, five, but I just assume not, just because I want to keep the comprehensive planning stuff moving. Any thoughts though?
Right, we could meet on May 19th, or June 2nd would be the week before or the week after.
Say June when?
June 2nd would be the first Monday.
Of course.
So that would give you a meeting June 2nd, June 17th for the comp plan, and then, I'm sorry, June 24th for the comp plan, and then the 30th for your regular meeting.
What suits everyone. Have any idea what the agenda's going to look like?
Frankly, I'm not going to sugarcoat it. I have not really taken stock of the, the project checklists in the development review folders in, in the zoning office yet, so I don't really know how close any of these projects are to coming in requesting approval for the states that they're currently in. So for the duration that some of these have been sitting in their slots, I would expect developers to be pushing forward, especially with the, you know, spring season upon us, and wanting to get things, you know, improvements in the ground before winter, so.
So why don't we shoot for May the 19th, unless there isn't enough to justify the meeting, is that?
So if we have any potential action items.
Action items.
May 19th, otherwise wait until June, kind of like we do for the December meeting.
Yes. Is that good for everyone?
I'm good.
Good for you, Jay?
Remains to be seen, right?
All right. May the 19th. No, 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 our regular meeting.
7:30.
7:30. Anything else on the new business? There was a lot, I don't mean a lot, maybe three or four Board of Appeal cases before us have not proceeded to have a hearing, or did they drop?
I believe one is, the hearing is pending. There's a daycare one that I believe is waiting for the hearing to be scheduled. I know there's another, I don't know if we've gotten the application back in, but the corner lot on Reverton and Commerce, some more of those Reaver subdivision lots that were 25 feet wide each, similar situation, two, two undeveloped lots are on the corner, but with the double front yard requirement for corner lots, it's, it's essentially impossible to build a home on there without some kind of a variance. So the owner has picked up the application, I don't know that it's come back in yet, completed. Not certain what the third one might be.
Right now, I didn't, I didn't make it, but there was, there was three of them, I thought. Okay.
Thinking there was a sign variance, but that...
We did the sign, we did the sign, that was the hitchman.
The hitchman made theirs smaller so they don't have to go to the Board of Appeals.
We didn't have to, the Far Company didn't have to go to the Board of Appeals.
Right, right, you guys approved both of those last month. I'll, I'll check with the city clerk if there's another one I can shoot.
Send us a text or something. Very good. Anything else?
Nothing here.
Anyone?
Question, with the moving of the next month's meeting to the 19th, would that apply to the comp plan workshop at all, or would that Tuesday just be the next? to the comp plan workshop at all, or would that Tuesday just be the next, following day?
I would think it would just be the following day.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe the 20th, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Anything else? Bill, you good? Thank you. Okay, I'm looking for a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Brown made it? Or seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Carrie, thank you, and thank you, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen.